Okay, good evening, everybody. We'll call to order the October 1st meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals at 7:02 PM. For the record, alternate member Commissioner Judy Cleary is sitting in for regular member Ken Poison. And Ms. Cleary, since your name was on my mind, can you call petition number one, please?
105 Chevy Street. Petition of Karen and Alberto Ray seeking a site plan review and variance of section 4.2 of the side yard setback requirement and section 14.2 expansion of a nonconformity order and order to construct a second floor addition over the existing footprint of a single-family dwelling. The hardship is a pre-existing, non-conforming lot with an existing, non-conforming structure, making it extremely difficult to comply with zoning regulations.
Okay, is the petitioner present? Please come forward, give us your name and address and brief summary of what you're asking for.
Good evening, Karen Ray, address 105 Chevy Street. I am seeking a variance for the side yard setback to expand the second floor addition of my current home.
Questions from members while we're getting set here? Let me just get, bring up the other one here, Chevy Street. Ms. Cleary, go ahead, thank you.
Okay. Will you be taking part of your fence down so that you're not in the town's way?
That is correct. I will, I will remove that section, yes. Thank you. Along Mark Roth Street, yeah.
Right.
Correct, yep.
The, um, the administrators note also mentioned the shed behind the garage. Is that going to stay or is that going to be removed?
Um, I, I can remove. It, it is on a platform, it's not foundation, so there's no issue with removing.
Okay. And actually, there was a third note on here, it said the swimming pool and pool deck should be relocated to a compliant location on the property. Actually, Mr. Brennan, if you wanted to explain that recommendation, just so that we're all clear.
Yeah, so the, both the pool and the shed have permits. They were permitted at one point. Uh, I'm sorry, not the shed, just the pool. And it seems like the site plan that they were going off of at the time was off of this existing vinyl fence, which is on the neighbor's property.
Okay.
Um, you know, state statute does protect the pool in a nonconforming location, it was permitted. Anything after three, a three-year period becomes basically grandfathered in.
Okay.
Um, to make the property a little more conforming and to reduce that nonconformity is a suggestion.
Is that something you're willing to do? I know that's probably, might be, take a little effort to move a pool.
Uh, yes, I do have children and they love the pool. Um, it might take a little effort to do that. Am willing to, so there's also like a pool deck off of that. So that I do know is even further over to that, you know, that part of the property, as you can see on the plot plan, so I'm willing to relo, you know, relocate that deck off the pool. If possible, I would like to leave the pool in that section, it's been there for over ten, you know, about 10 years, but if needed, I will do that relocation.
Okay. How long have you lived at the, or own the property? How long have you been there?
Well, I've lived there all my life, it's actually my grandparents' home, I just now own it, and I've owned it since February 2009.
Okay, that's good to know. Mr. Carroll.
A question for Mr. Brennan. As far as the pool in the shed, was the issue just with the setback or was it also dealing with area coverage?
Definitely, definitely the setback was an issue. I do, the shed as well, so the above ground pool itself does not count with the coverage.
But the deck does.
The deck on the side, but not the shed.
And I believe in this, in this zone, I see that the two-car garage is over the setback line, but being detached two-car garage, does that have the 10-foot setback?
No, so detached accessory structures are 3 feet inside the 3 feet.
So that's, that's fine in its location.
Why is it that you want to add a?
Use, use your microphone, Commissioner.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Why do you want to add another floor?
Uh, to give my family more space, they're growing, growing kids. And, you know, it's been a, not a, not the biggest cape in the world, so just to give us, give us more room, yes. Growing kids.
Very pretty house, I drove by there today.
Oh, thank you very much.
Okay, any other members have questions? If not, thank you very much.
Okay, great, thank you.
Um, are there any members of the public that wish to speak in favor of the petition? Any members that wish to speak in favor? Anybody wish to speak in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Hearing none, we'll take a motion to?
I'd like to speak in favor. Barry Knott, 1656 Main Street, Stratford. The issue regarding the pool, the thing's grandfathered under the statute, it's been there for nine years, it's going to be expensive and difficult for them to move the pool when it's already been grandfathered as a nonconforming use. It seems to me like no disrespect meant to you, Dan, but I'm not so sure that it's reasonable under these circumstances. Thank you.
So noted. Okay, anybody else wish to speak in favor or opposition? Hearing none, we'll take a motion to close. Mr. Carroll, second. Ms. Cleary, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. Who wants to take number two? Ms. Lynch, grab, call petition number two, please.
125 Mazarick Avenue. Petition of Amaran Singh, excuse me if I can't pronounce your name, seeking a coastal site plan review and variances of section 10.2.2 of the minute, minimum requirement front setbacks, section 12.9 of the loading berth requirements, and section 14.2 expansion of nonconformity in the MA zone in order to construct and addition to an existing industrial building. Hardship, pre-existent, nonconforming parcel and structure located on multiple corners having multiple fronts.
Okay, thank you. Is the petitioner present?
Yes.
Okay, please come forward, give us your name and address and, um, what you're asking for.
Okay. Good evening, P&amp;Z Board. My name is Tom Probert, I'm at 25 Denton Place in Stratford, uh, and I'm representing them. I am the designer of the building, I own North Arrow Design and Contracting, and the reason we are here is to ask you for permission to expand this building, that's already a nonconforming, a nonconforming lot. My client owns a merchandise business and he needs more space, he's already purchased the building. The building right now is only 16 feet tall, which doesn't justify or legally allow a second story, which he would like for a couple of small offices, so we'd like to bring it up about another six, six to eight feet, uh, to allow, um, the headroom for a second story. And also, we'd like to go out in the back 12, approximately 12 feet to accommodate the ease of unloading for trucks and for receiving. And unfortunate, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Unfortunately, the nonconformity is the building is designated as having three fronts, so how do we put anything on the rear of the building unless we, uh, get permission from you?
Okay. Okay, I'm just going through this, because this, this one's got a few different pieces to it, and I just want to make sure that we hit all the right items that we have to. I know that we get, especially, it's fairly straightforward as far as, uh, the front setback requirement, that's understood. And 20, and then loading, loading berth requirement, 12 feet wide, I'm just going through this Yeah, could you speak to the loading berth requirement and what variance you're looking for on that?
No. What, could we? With, I'm sorry.
Do we lose something? Hold on, section 12.9 of the zoning regulations. It says each required loading berth shall be at least 12 feet wide, 33 feet long, and 14 feet high. Would that be a complication of the second story? Anyone? Yeah. Yeah, in your notes on third paragraph, we're just talking about the waiver of section 12.9?
Right. The applicant had identified it on their application, but didn't address it in the narrative that was submitted. So we have it on the top of each application which section you were going for. I pulled it from the regs and couldn't really understand it from the plan that was submitted, exactly what was being requested, um, so I advise the Commissioner.
I'm sorry, I must have missed that.
Okay. Okay, let me go back and grab the application itself while we're here, hang on, one sec. Too many documents. Okay, on the, looks like the second page of your application, it says the variance requested, and there's a, um, a series of different zoning regulations cited, and one of them is section 12.9, which is in reference to the size of a loading berth. Maybe the wrong section was identified, is, is that possible?
It may have been. I believe our surveyor may have filled out the application.
Incorrectly?
I'm not aware of it.
Okay.
Just a minute.
Yes, sir. Mr. Carroll.
If I might, uh, I'm going to take this cap, that what they're referring to is, I believe the building right now has an existing loading dock.
Yes.
That, loading park.
Yep.
That is going to be eliminated, I'm assuming?
It would be eliminated, but the door may be used.
So that loading, the, I believe, Mr. Chairman, you had mentioned 33 feet in length was the, I don't have that.
Correct, yeah, 33 by 14 by 12.
By the look of where the new overhead doors are going to go, it appears that you do have that in length, whether it's height or not, I haven't seen on the drawing. Assuming it's in reference to that.
Okay.
Location, the loading access to the building.
Yes, from the existing to receiving, yes.
Okay.
So I'm just, I'm not clear on why, judging from what I can see on the plan.
Mm-hmm.
The plan is conformant, so why, what does the requirement of variances reverse the damage to the building?
Okay.
Okay. So we'll, I guess we'll take no action on that one unless there's a discernible, um, need for it, obviously. If it turns out that there is something that you're looking for, variance for, you'd have to come back, or we could actually, if you wanted to take time to confer with your client, that's something we could, we could even table it for a little while.
Okay, what I thought, I'm sorry, what I thought the problem was going to be was the building going back already.
Yeah, there's two separate, the setback is one thing, but I grabbed that one out of the, the list, I mean, there's several on the application, and there's one, two, three, three, um, three regulations that you're seeking a variance for. 12, 9, 10.2.2, and 14.2, so that, that's what we're just going off of. Let me just go, let's put that aside for the moment. The, um, Mr. Brennan had suggested a few conditions, possible recommendations for approval. Application should obtain a letter, uh, by license engineer assuring compliance with the town's MS4 store management plan. All recommendations provided by the ARB should be followed. Development is within the FEMA flood zone, and landscaping should be in accordance with, um, renderings. And a fence should be considered along Orange Street to prevent further, um, storage on the town road. Did you have a chance to review those?
Yes.
And do you have any questions on those?
The list from the ARB, yeah, we've reviewed, we've reviewed them.
Okay, any concerns or questions on?
Not at all, no.
Okay. Any questions on any of the other recommended remediations?
No.
Okay.
Nope.
How long has your client owned the, um, property?
Uh, this year. How long have you owned the property?
Last year, September.
Sep, what?
Last year, September.
September of last year.
September of last year, okay. Okay. Members have questions? Go ahead, Ms. Cleary.
Okay, if I, I notice off on Orange Street, they have a very small setback compared to yours. I don't see a problem with that. Coming in the front, I, I think that a new building will be nice for the neighborhood, but what, it's a tiny thing, but can make a big difference in the feel of the neighborhood is you've got some nice plants out there. They're, it's not taken care of and it looks like shit. If that could be looked to, because I wouldn't want to look across the street at that. Yes.
Yeah, the ARB brought that up.
Did they?
Yeah, and we'll take care of that.
Okay, cool.
Mr. Brennan, Mr. Florrick, just knowing this one's a little complex, any items that the board should be inquiring on that we haven't brought up so far? Especially with the FEMA flood regs?
No.
Okay.
I mean, with the FEMA stuff?
Yep.
I mean, that seems like that goes to the building department, who's the, the town's FEMA representative?
Okay.
So, I don't think that's something that the ZBA has to deal with.
Any other questions from membership? Mr. Carroll?
Sir, I believe this.
Just put your mic on. Yeah.
This would be the rendering of the?
Yes.
New structure. And on the plot plan, I'm just a little confused now, you show two-story addition to one side of the building, two-story addition to the other side, so the center section would be the same height as the drawing, but just that ceiling height would be completely open in that center section? Is it a little?
No, the, I think I understand you. The existing building plus the proposed addition in the back would all be at the exact same height of 23, 24 feet.
Correct, but just, I'm just a little confused on the plot plan here, that the, the two flanking, uh, on the drawing, the two flanking, uh, additions here say two-story and the center section says one-story. So that would just have a higher ceiling in that, that is not two-story, so to speak, in that center section.
Yes, it would be a two-story. I'm, and where are you looking at this, a single-story?
Uh, on this.
Oh, some, that, that's interesting. I don't have that, I have the, I have, I have the site plan stating two stories.
I was just a little confused, it doesn't seem to, it, they don't seem to go together.
Yeah, it could be an error on the surveyor's part, but it's, it's supposed to be two stories, bring the existing building up six feet and the new structure up to that same, same height.
So the entire building will have two levels?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
I believe, uh, where the state is, or if I'm not mistaken, the entire building being, but the interior of the building, please correct me, there's going to be a mess in the end, so one half of that building is going to be two stories, but the inside, the other half is going to go four.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, so the entire building is not going to be two floors?
No, I'm sorry. The entire building will be the same height, half of the building laterally will be, yes.
Oh, okay.
Sorry about that, I didn't understand that, yeah. A2 shows open to below.
Okay.
For the second floor plan, but that is correct.
Ms. Cleary?
On the west side, I think there's a number of, of big metal containers, are those all going to be taken out?
Oh, yes. Yes. Mm-hmm. Except for the, the gas supply obviously would be moved out to the exterior wall, but no, there'll be no containers, no nothing back there.
Nice.
Just a question, Mr. Florrick, I think I saw it in the notes, but I just want to confirm. This is one of the more unusual statements of hardship I've seen, um, and I just wanted to make sure that that's actually valid before we go through, go forward.
Are these in the staff comments?
Is in the staff comments, and then it's on the agenda, I believe. It's declared. Sorry, I got too many pieces of paper here. Thank you.
Well, certainly, uh, pre-existing.
Yeah. It says, uh, "pre-existing, nonconforming parcel structure located on multiple corners having multiple fronts."
So I'm familiar with, uh, a property being on multiple corners.
Mm-hmm.
Can form the basis of a legal hardship.
Okay.
But it's up to you guys to make the fact-specific inquiry in this case, whether or not they've established that hardship. You, you see the corner lots a lot with fences, people will come to you and say they want a variance because they're on a corner lot, they want six feet all the way around.
Mm-hmm.
That certainly, I think, can form the basis of a hardship, so.
Okay, so then this one is actually on?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's three corners, okay, yeah, on Benton?
Yeah.
On Short, and my eyes played a little game on me, and Mazarick, okay.
Yeah, because there's actually a paper street between the, the building and, uh, on the west side of the building.
Okay.
The west side of the property. Yeah.
Remain a paper street. Okay.
So they're actually surrounded by, on all four sides by a road, but three of those are paved and proved streets.
Oh, okay, now I see what you're saying, so this is essentially an island.
Yes.
Okay. I didn't realize that, glad we talked about it.
But to the west of it, there's a paper street.
Okay, that's where I was getting a little confused, I appreciate that clarification, because I know Orange Street's a real street, but it actually extends beyond its?
Yeah.
Um, onto the, onto that, that piece of property. Okay, I understand now, thank you. Okay. Makes sense to me. Any other questions from members? Mr. Carroll?
The issue of the FEMA requirement?
Yes, sir.
Just that we, that we establish what the?
So, yeah, I think they'll have to go through the building department, who's the town's FEMA rep, right? Right, Dan?
Well, we did get a letter from the, the building.
Yeah, from Brian Donovan, I believe.
But I don't think it was conclusive.
Yeah, because I, I don't think that Brian knows whether or not they're going to need, or I'm not sure.
It depends on if the cost of the work.
Correct, that's why I started from the work.
If it exceeds more than 50%, it's a crazy value, the structure, it's going to require to be all FEMA standards. That could either be through, uh, raising the building, dry butt, or what, what, that's determined after the building.
So I don't think we need to deal with that, the disjunction right now?
You know, just, remember to make sure it's convertible.
Yeah.
Yep.
So they'll, they'll cross that bridge when they come to it.
And the comments from the E should be considered, and the variance decision being equal to.
Okay. Let me just grab those real quick, I know we had it, I just wanted to get one more quick look at it. Sometimes those remarks go on for quite a while and... Okay, I see what they're saying. Accordingly, the board must determine whether granting the variance that would allow additions to an existing industrial building located within a coastal flood hazard area will result in a significant exposure of life and property to flood hazards, or if it only marginally adds to such exposure in light of already developed nature of the surrounding area. How many people work at the, on the site, or how many people?
Excuse me?
How many people are actually working at the site, or?
Will be employed there.
Employed there, yeah, that's probably a better way to state it.
Ten to 14?
14.
14.
14?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. Questions, anyone else? Okay. Anybody else wish to speak in, okay, I guess you're all set, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Does anybody wish to speak in favor of the petition? Anyone in favor? Anybody want to speak in opposition? Opposition? If not, we'll take a motion to close. Ms. Sweeley, a second. Ms. Lynch, all in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. Uh, Mr. Carroll or Ms. Sweeley, which one of you wants to grab number three?
Number three.
Okay, by majority vote, Mr. Carroll, call petition number three.
Uh, number 577 Holly Lane, petition of Par One Development LLC, seeking a site plan review and variance of 12-5-7 of the parking requirements and 16-6-3-1A of the sign regulations incidental to a full-service restaurant. Hardship is limited developable, developable upland area on a three-plus acre lot.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Barry Knott, I'm a lawyer with the firm of Knott, Knott &amp; Dunn with offices at 1656 Main Street, Stratford. I'm here on behalf of Par One Development LLC of 577 Holly Lane. James Fitzpatrick, this elderly gentleman sitting in the first row behind me is the managing member of that entity. At this time, I'd like to submit the certificates of mailing and a photo of the sign posted on the premises. And I want to make reference to a folder of exhibits which I have handed to each of you, to which I will be making reference during the course of my presentation, the first four of which are photos of the restaurant, uh, the construction of which is almost 98% complete. This, this restaurant is about to open. Exhibit one is a picture of the restaurant taken from the street. Exhibit two is a picture of the entrance to the restaurant taken from the parking lot to the right of the building. Exhibit three is an aerial photograph of the building, uh, showing the exterior seating area and the little shed behind the building, which I'll be talking about a little later in my presentation. And exhibit four is another photo aerial of the outdoor seating area, which is the subject of this application. Now, the subject premises was the site of an abandoned single-family house five years ago, six years ago. This property was purchased by my client, he subsequently lent it to the Stratford Fire Department because they wanted to do training exercises, breaking into the roof and doing what firemen do, which we allowed them to do. It's located immediately north of the medical building at 495 Holly Lane, it's located two parcels to the. It's located two parcels to the north of the North Town Center Shopping Center, also known as the Big Y Shopping Center. It's located directly across the street from one of the entrances to the Marriott Hotel. In January of two thousand seventeen, the zoning commission changed the zone of this property from residential RS three to CF, limited business. CF is considered a limited business zone because the permitted uses in that zone are extremely limited and they're limited to all uses that require special case approval. In other words, you can't just go in and get a building permit to build something in a CF zone, like you can in a CA zone. You have to go for special case approval first. So this was one of those situations. In January of two thousand eighteen, the Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Commission approved the construction of a twenty-two hundred and square foot, twenty-two hundred and fifty square foot restaurant on this site. Finally, on February eighteenth, two thousand eighteen, the zoning commission approved a special case application, a soil and erosion control application for the same use as we are proposing now. That February two thousand eighteen special case approval required that a building permit be taken out by the applicant within eighteen months of that approval date. With COVID and everything that was going on at that time, my client did not make the eighteen-month deadline to take out a building permit. So he lost the special case approval to open up the restaurant. And therefore, we had to go back to zoning in two thousand twenty and receive special case approval all over again, which we did. So at that point, we had to change the zone, we had a liquor license, we had special case approval for a restaurant, and all was well and good. Under the original plans that were approved in two thousand twenty, the kitchen was to the rear of the building and the bar was in the middle of the building and seating was at the front of the building along Holly Lane. That was the original plan. However, once my client got into the building, he realized that having patrons at large windows facing Holly Lane with the attendant traffic speeding by was not the best look for the customers in his restaurant. Rather, he reversed the interior layout so the kitchen was in the front of the building along Holly Lane and the bar and the seating area was to the rear of the building and to the left and rear of the building so patrons could look upon, look out upon the patio area adjacent to the wetlands plantings and flowers and all the other stuff that we were required to put out there by the inland wetlands commission, wetland plantings. Exhibit five is the original site plan that was approved. Now, if you look at exhibit five, the building's twenty-two hundred and fifty square feet. There's a small patio to the north of the restaurant business, exhibit five, which was our outdoor patio at the time we got the original approval. There were four tables, each had four chairs, so there were a total of sixteen seats out on the patio in the original iteration of the zoning approval that we received. However, when the windows were reoriented to accommodate these new views with the large windows which were originally on the street side and the smaller windows which were really, which were originally on the patio side, the layout was reversed. Once this reorientation of the interior seating was accomplished, my client realized that there's a large and beautiful wetland and landscaped area to the north of the building where the original patio was located. However, the original patio was too small to take advantage of this atmosphere. Now, I just want to point out the shed that's on exhibit three, there's a little shed behind the building. That shed is twelve by twelve. It's a hundred and forty-four square feet. It becomes important because the square footage of that shed gets added to the area of the restaurant and the area of the outdoor seating that drives the amount of parking that were required. So under our zoning regulations, we have to provide parking for all the area inside the building, the twenty-two hundred and fifty square feet inside the building, the eight hundred and forty-four square feet, which is the footprint of the shed, and there were about four other little areas in the expanded patio, which totaled another hundred and, excuse me, another twelve hundred square feet of area that we had to include in our site plan in order to submit this application for a waiver of parking. So what we're doing here tonight is we're asking for a waiver of parking so that the large patio, which is exhibit six, if you compare exhibit five to exhibit six, you'll see that the patio area on exhibit six is substantially larger than the patio area in the original plan, which was exhibit five. And if you look back at those photos that I submitted to you in the beginning, photos three and four, you can see that the, the patio area that was constructed by my client is significantly larger than that little patio that was on the original plan. He's got a two-level patio area. It's all pavers. It's, it's, it's stone. He's got a fire pit out there. I mean, the place is absolutely magnificent. Unfortunately, he's out in the field doing all these things that he thinks is going to make his restaurant better, which they did. Unfortunately, we're here because now we've got to ratify the changes that he made in the field. And this happens often with builders. They, they get out in the field, they see something that's wrong that needs to be corrected, and they modify them in the field. Come back to zoning later on and get, get it, it straightened out. Now, what are we talking about as far as a waiver of parking is concerned? Stratford zoning regulations, as I indicated, require the total square footage for outdoor dining areas to be included in the parking requirements. Because the size of the patio outside is increasing, the required parking is fifty-one cars. I did the arithmetic on all these little additional areas of square footage in the parking lot, and we need fifty-one cars under the current zoning regulation. We've got thirty-nine, so we're short twelve cars, which is the variance that I'm asking you for. This parking calculation is being made at the rate of one space per seventy-five square feet of restaurant area. That's what the regulation says for restaurant. You need one parking space per seventy-five square feet of restaurant, including all the restaurant, the space inside the restaurant, all the patio area, and even that little shed area, okay? However, under the new zoning regulations, which the planning and zoning office and a consultant that they hired to revise our zoning regulations has come up with a new regulation that everybody is reviewing right now that requires one parking space per one hundred square feet of interior restaurant space. So if we were to calculate the required parking under the new regulation, we would require thirty-eight parking spaces, not fifty-one parking spaces, and we have thirty-nine parking spaces. So technically, under the old parking regulations, we need a waiver. Under the new regulations, we wouldn't be needing a waiver, but the new regulations have not been enacted yet. But I'm, I'm saying that to you simply so that you can see that these old parking regulations that have been on the books in Stratford for a zillion years reflected parking needs from the nineteen fifties, nineteen sixties, nineteen seventies. They don't include any mixed parking, shared parking, or all the other stuff that's now included in the zoning regulations. So the second part of my application relate, is for a variance of wall signage. Under the Stratford zoning regulations in a CF zone, all signs on the front facia of a building shall not exceed point six six square feet of sign area for each lineal foot of building area. Here, the length of the building along Holly Lane is fifty fifth, fifty feet. The, the building is fifty feet wide on Holly Lane. So when you do the arithmetic and multiply fifty feet by point six six, you get a maximum of thirty-three square feet in signage that you can have on the front of this building under our zoning regulations. Now, we are proposing a eleven point six seven square foot sign. Not thirty-three, not more than thirty-three, substantially less than thirty-three. We're proposing an eleven square foot sign on the front of the building, which is approximately thirty-five percent of what we can, what we're allowed to have under the zoning regulations. However, on the side of the building, which is the side of the building that's going to be seen by customers pulling into the parking lot, we're only allowed to have point three three feet times the width of the building. Here, the building is forty-five feet deep. Point three three times forty-five feet deep is fourteen point eight five square feet. So under the zoning regulations, we're allowed to have fourteen square feet of signage. We're proposing twenty-four feet of signage. So we're over by ten feet on the side of the building. We're under by a zillion square feet on the front of the building, all right? So the total signage on both sides of the building equals thirty-six point four seven square feet. We are allowed a total of forty-seven square feet under the zoning regulations. Most on the front, some on the side. We're coming in with ten less square feet of signage. The difference being that the larger sign is going to be on the side and the smaller sign is going to be on the front, okay? The other thing is, under our signage regulations, any property owner is allowed to have a pylon sign, another freestanding sign at the entrance. You know, you see these signs. Eat at Sloppy Joe's, pull in here, that kind of thing. Well, I'm not, I don't mean to. We're not doing a pylon sign here. So the only signage is going to be the little sign on the front of the building, the big sign on the back. No pylon signs. So we're way under in total signage, okay? We're over in parking, we're way, I mean, we're under in parking, we're way over in signage. Now, let's talk about hardship. The lot area of this property is three point two acres, three point two. However, my client is required to put a conservation easement on the back of this property as a condition of his wetland approval. The, the conservation easement is going to encumber two point five acres of the three point two acres. So two point five acres of this property is not going to be usable for any kind of construction activity. We're limited to point six five acres out of three point two acres, okay? That will prohibit any activity from being able to be constructed within the conservation easement. Now, exhibits nine and ten relate to the conservation easement. Exhibit nine is a site plan showing the total acreage of the property to be included within the conservation easement. As you can see from this exhibit, the conservation easement will cover most of the property. It, it covers essentially from the stone wall behind the parking lot all the way to the back of the property, the whole thing. Exhibit ten is a legal description of the area to be concerned. I don't expect you to read the legal description. I don't like reading them myself. I don't recommend reading legal descriptions to anybody. But if you were to look at the bottom of that legal description, you will see that the area to be conserved is two point five four seven acres. Two point, at the bottom of the legal description, two point five four seven. Therefore, while my client owns three point two acres, only a small piece of the property, point six five acres, can be used for any kind of construction activity. If there were no conservation easement required by the wetlands commission, more of the lot could have been developed for this use and no variances would have been required. I wouldn't be here. Furthermore, because of the extensively, extensively conserved area to the rear of the site, the building needed to be situated as close to the street as possible to get it away from the conservation easement area. Because of this building orientation, the signage on the south side of the building near the parking lot is more important and more visible to potential customers than the sign on the street side of the building. So between the size of the property, the limit to the amount of development that we can use on this property, and the location of the building so close to the street because of the conservation easement, it's better for us to have the bigger sign on the side of the building than on the front of the building. And being able to use point six five acres of three point two acres is our hardship. This application should be approved. I would appreciate it ASAP because he's trying to get this place open. And he owes me a couple of luncheons. He owes me a couple of luncheons over there. Couple of non-alcoholic beers.
Questions from members? Ms. Clary.
Okay, and number seven, that's the side, correct?
Number seven. I'll tell you in a minute.
Well, where are people going to be going in?
Yeah, that's where people are going to be going. Uh, yeah, number, no, no. Number eight, number eight is the entrance.
Where, where people go in, correct?
Where people go in. Number seven is the frontage on Holly Lane where nobody goes in.
I call that the side.
Yeah. Oh, that's the side, yeah.
Okay.
No, Holly Lane, nobody goes in. The parking lot. Exhibit eight, that's where the entrance to the building is going to be.
That sign is beautiful. I like it.
Go ahead.
Wait, the parking spaces will be okay. Now, if it was really full and really busy and there's a lot of parking spaces across the street, if somebody used that and crossed the road and had an accident, who would, who would be responsible?
The person cross, the person crossing the road would be responsible.
Thank you.
Just coincidentally, however, the Marriott Hotel doesn't have any food service anymore. Yeah. So they've been coming over to his place saying, "When are you going to open up?" Because we want to send our, our visitors over to your place to eat. So, I mean, everybody in town, this thing's been kicking around since two thousand eighteen. I've been telling people there's going to be a restaurant here since two thousand eighteen. You know, I'm still, I can't believe I'm still alive, standing here, waiting for him to get going on this thing for my free lunch. But it's now eight, six years later. And every time I see somebody, every time he sees somebody, "When are you going to open a restaurant? When are you going to open a restaurant?" It's the only restaurant in the north end of town, by the way. The only one. With a fire pit. Yes, Judy.
I love that sign.
Isn't it beautiful?
Yeah, it's just so understated.
With people walking across the street, obviously, can the town put little white thingies, you know?
That's, that's probably a good idea. The, the problem with Holly Lane is half of it's in Stratford, half of it's in Trumbull. So it would have to be coordinated, and, and it's, it's not a state highway. So it would have to be coordinated through the two traffic control entities, which I think is a good idea, actually.
Or even more, the ten seconds.
Go ahead.
You know, the, press the button, you can walk.
Walk, don't walk sign, yeah.
That would be a town responsibility.
Both, both Stratford and Trumbull.
And one last question. What is the cuisine?
Want to introduce yourself and discuss the cuisine?
James Fitzpatrick, the developer of the restaurant, one seventy Morning Dew Lane in Stratford. It's just going to be regular, good old American food. We're going to start out with breakfast in the morning. We're going to have a to-go menu for travelers that, and commuters that, that go down the road and have nothing to eat. Then we're going to have breakfast, then we're going to go into lunch, and then we're going to have a full dinner. So we're going to have three, three meals a day. And then we might have an after, an abbreviated menu after, after dinner and appetizers and what have you. So it's just going to be, you know, good home-cooked meals. That's it.
One other thing. That shed in the back. In the summer, they're going to, she's going to sell ice cream out of that shed. It's got, it's got a window that opens. So they'll be able to sell ice cream to the people that are out on the patio in the summer.
So let's talk a little bit more about the parking. Because that's, that, that's a big chunk that you're going for.
Yes.
And I think the point Ms. Clary is making is there's no, there's not a lot of options here. You really can't walk to Big Y Plaza because there's no sidewalk there, if I'm not mistaken. And you'd have to go through the wetlands, which is not a good idea, obviously, or you'd have to cross that very busy street. So either you park there or you don't, basically.
Right.
So the storage shed was not on the original plan, correct?
That's true, yes. That's true, yes.
Okay, so then that created forty-four, one hundred and forty-four square feet worth of it? So, that took one and a fraction.
Parking spaces.
Parking spaces off the table right there.
That's correct, yep.
Now, the, and the, the original plan conformed to the fifty, fifty-one, correct? Fifty-one parking spaces?
No, 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 thirty-nine.
Thirty.
We didn't need fifty-one in those days because the patio was not as big.
Okay, so how many parking spots were on the original plan?
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine. And we're still going for thirty-nine?
No, we're going for fifty-one. No, I'm sorry. We're still going for thirty-nine.
We're still going for thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine, yeah. Thirty-nine are built, they're there, they're striped.
Yeah.
Thirty-eight? Are you sure? We've had this discussion before. He says there's thirty-eight. My recollection was there's thirty-nine, but.
Okay, thirty-eight. Okay, so, and because of the expanded patio and now the storage shed slash ice cream place, that's what's causing the, there's an increase in demand for parking because of those site changes?
Well, not necessarily. That could be true, but it isn't necessarily true because the people that are going to be out on that patio are going to be waiting to get into the restaurant. In other words, there's not going to be a duplication of, of service here.
Well, it's outdoor dining, though. I mean, it's, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, nine, ten, eleven.
But not the people that are going to be sitting over by the fire pit. We, I'm not showing any, I'm not showing any seating over by the fire pit over in the corner because we had not received any variance yet to show that seating. You see that large area? You can see it from the photo, Exhibit three or four.
Okay, the fire, I see it, the fire pit's over on the corner.
Yeah, so people are going to be sitting there, waiting to get seating in the restaurant or on the patio, having drinks while they're waiting to get into the restaurant in the summer.
Okay, so, but was that the area that you have marked as gravel area, is that taken into the calculation for the parking?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it was. Every area out there was taken, that's how I got to fifty-one. I counted everything.
But the area that's marked, this thatched area, whatever you want to call it, crossed lines, that's the, that's now the footprint, which is significantly bigger than it was on the original plan?
That's correct.
That's correct, okay.
But remember, under the new regulations.
That was my next question.
We only need thirty-eight parking spaces.
This new regulation, is this something pending before the zoning commission now?
Yes, they, they're drafted, well, Dan can speak to it. We had a meeting on it today, as a matter of fact.
I, I was not fully engaged in that meeting. Our office has been a little shorthanded, so I had it on in the background listening.
Well, I could give you an update then.
Well, I, I, I appreciate that, but I mean, we can't really base a decision on a potential future law that hasn't been passed yet, yeah.
I'm not asking you to base your decision on a regulation that has yet to be adopted. What I'm saying is that the smart people that put together the new zoning regulations say you only need one space per one hundred square feet, not one space per seventy-five. So, if I was standing here three months from now, I wouldn't be standing here because, except for the sign waiver, because we'd have enough parking. So, it's not like you're jumping off a cliff into Pandora's Box by, by approving a, a twelve-car, a twelve parking space variance because six, three months from now, it's going to be the regulation.
Do you know how big the, what's the net increase in the size of the patio now?
I can tell you in a minute. Not counting the shed. It's thirty-six hundred and fifty-six square feet.
That's the size or the net increase?
No, that includes the restaurant, twenty-two hundred and fifty, everything, okay? Excuse me.
Thirty-six fifty-six. And wait, so thirty-six fifty-six and that's divided by seventy-five square feet?
Yes.
It's forty-eight point seven-four, not fifty-one.
Correct, that's correct.
Okay.
Then you add the hundred and forty-four, you get up to fifty point sixty-seven.
Okay, I got you now.
Should I round that up?
Okay. Now, believe me, I, I know this has been a long time coming and I know it's been a lot and I sat on the previous approvals for it, but I just want to make sure. I mean, the, the issue I know in this piece of property is, it is, it's tight and there's no room for expansion. You know, that's, that complicates a lot of what your options are.
Right. Well, I mean, we have three acres here and unfortunately, we can't use it.
Yeah, no, I understand that. I mean, I just hope that it's going to be, you know, if it becomes too popular, you're going to have a problem. That's, you know, that's, 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 that's your issue right now. There's no other place to go. Okay. Questions from other members? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody wish to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody wish to speak in favor? Mr. Fedett? Always happy to welcome a former member and chairman of the board.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. You all look different from this angle.
It's a light.
In my day position, I'm the blight officer for the town. I would like to see this project supported because Mr. Fitzpatrick took one of the biggest blighted pieces on Holly Lane and has turned it into an actual gem up there. It's, uh. Mr. Fitzpatrick has taken one of the blighted properties up on Holly Lane and turned it into a gem. Everything is top shelf. I've seen many of other projects that Mr. Fitzpatrick has built. He does excellent work, uses nothing but the best products, something the town can really be proud of. So, I urge everyone to deeply consider approving this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody wish, wish to speak in favor? Anybody else in favor? Anybody else wish to speak in opposition to it? Opposition? Okay, if not, we'll take a motion to close. By Ms. Lynch, second by Mr. Carroll. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no, carries unanimously. We will wrap up our public hearing at eight o'clock and without objection, we'll go into our administrative session. Okay, so let's start off with the first petition, one oh five Chevy Street. You want to take it off the table, members? Ms. Lynch, second by Ms. Cleary. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no, carries unanimously. What's your pleasure? Ms. Cleary? Motion approved by Ms. Cleary? Is there a second?
Motion approved.
By Ms., second by Ms. Lynch. Discussion.
The owner of one oh five Chevy?
One oh five Chevy, yep.
Yes. The owner has owned it, grandfathered in for nine years, two thousand nine. She agreed to take down the fence due to the fact it's across the neighbors, close to the neighbors. If push comes to shove, the garage may move, the garage as well. The swimming pool, the shed is okay, but the swimming pool, the deck off the pool, relocation, move the deck over. I do see that it was, the house was built nineteen forty-eight and then it was grandfathered in. I think it's, uh, should be approved. Oh. Oh, yes. Yes, the garage is in compliance and the shed should not be.
Sorry, I got to get my other sheet here. I lost the Chevy piece. Thank you. Okay. Further discussion, members? Mr. Carroll? Okay. The mover was Cleary and second by Ms. Lynch, correct?
Yeah, Lynch and then second by.
Okay. Just to clarify and just make this easier, for your motion to approve, are you asking that the recommendations be included in the approval? With the possible exception of the swimming pool? That seems to be there, seems to be a consensus here that that would be, okay. And do you concur?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion will be, to restate, is to approve with the following conditions that were presented in Mr. Brennan's letter, with the exception of moving the swimming pool and pool deck.
Correct.
Okay, we got that, good. I want to make sure we got that, okay? Pool and, pool and pool deck, we're going to, we're going to ignore that, correct? Yeah. If you move, don't move the pool, you can't move the deck, you know, doesn't make sense. Okay, other comments on the application? I have a couple here, but I'll let everybody else go first. Okay. Just wanted to add also that we do see that this is the variance because of the hardship, that it is a non-conforming structure and a, and extremely difficult to comply with the regulation. It is not a self-created hardship and considering the length of ownership in that, in the family, the applicant, her family had it, her grandparents had it, and she's owned it since two thousand nine. It does seem to be in accord with what's going on in the neighborhood as far as the other area, other people have done similar type of work and it's the minimum necessary to relieve the hardship. Anything else I'm missing on that one? Yep. Certainly. Okay, any further discussion? Not, we'll go to a vote. Ms. Cleary? Ms. Swieely? Mr. Carroll?
Approved.
Ms. Lynch?
Approved.
Chair votes yes, the ayes are five, the nays are zero, the variance is approved. Okay. All right, you want to take item two off the table? Mr. Carroll? Is there a second? Ms. Cleary? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no, carries unanimously. What's your pleasure, commissioners? Mr. Carroll?
I think we just need clarification as we discussed on the loading dock, loading, you know, what that's going to entail and what.
You are correct. So, I believe, and keep me honest, gentlemen, that we are going to, what is under consideration would be the variance of section ten point two point two and fourteen point two only. Would that be correct? And we will take no action on the variance for section twelve point nine. Okay, so I believe that's the issue. We are only going to, and let the record reflect, that this is, we are only going to touch, due to the statements made by the applicant, that there is no stated request for any variance of section twelve point nine, that we will not consider that. And actually, just to make it official, I'm going to make a motion that for this petition, there will be no consideration of section twelve point nine, just that we can officially be on the record. Is there a second to that motion by Mr. Carroll? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no, carries unanimously. Now, we can go back and we can, can, we can discuss ten point two and fourteen point two, if that's okay? If you want to make a motion to that effect. So, for the remaining two variances, do you want to make a motion to, for those two?
Yes.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Carroll to approve, I take it? Don't want to put words in your mouth. Yep, to approve section, the variances of section ten point two point two and fourteen point two. Is there a second by Ms. Cleary? Okay, discussion.
For, um, the Mazarick, yes.
Mazarick, yep.
Owner since September twenty twenty-three, he's owned it. In regards to the back, remove loading, he wanted, said remove loading back. It's going to have fourteen employees. It is a client merchandise business. And fence to be around the perimeters of the area will be built, as he said, to keep all, off the roads, anything going on the roads. And he needs a twelve-foot back unloading, receiving for the trucks in the back, so the receiving trucks can unload. And he said he needed six to eight feet and twelve foot for the back to unload.
Okay.
He also said it wasn't going to be two levels, it's just like a mesmine, is that correct?
That's correct.
Uh, it's not going to be two levels because Mr. Carroll received clarification on that in the middle section. The only question I have is FEMA. Because it's sandy, flood in, there was a lot of flooding hurricane in that section. So, we are still going to wait for FEMA to give an approval? It's not going to?
We have it.
We have it?
Yep.
This is the deep, deep, not FEMA, right? Deep, okay.
Okay.
Yeah. What's that? Put, can you use your microphone, please?
Let's say it floods, lot of damage. Would FEMA be picking up the cost or would the insurance company be picking up the cost? Just, this is a curiosity for me. Okay.
If they're not FEMA compliant, they're going to have trouble getting any sort of financing from a bank. So, we don't know whether or not they need FEMA, whether they need to be FEMA compliant because we don't know whether or not they're going to increase the value of the property fifty percent or more. They'll have to deal with Building Department on that, so.
So, actually, just a procedural question. Now, I'm reading this a little bit more closely. The way it states here is that the board must determine whether granting the variance would allow additions, would result in significant exposure of life and property to flood hazards.
That's from deep?
From deep, correct. But now, we're saying that, and then they put the criteria after that, which talks about the improvements like additions and expansions of existing buildings are considered substantial when they are worth more based on the fifty percent of the value of the pre-improvement structures.
So, deep is, deep's letters in regards to their CAM application, though, right?
Okay.
So, they, I'm sure they overlap a bit.
Okay.
CAM, the CAM application process. I don't know how deep does it, you probably know better than I do. I don't know how deep does it, you probably know better than I do.
Okay. But it seems like we, that's a piece of, we almost need to know that before we can make a determination on the variance, though.
The value, the value that they're placing on the improvements?
And that's why I was asking about the number of people to be working there, because significant, you know, increase in exposure of life and property. Or how do you measure that? I mean, I don't wanna, I'm not playing God here, you know? Every life is valuable. 14's a, you know, if this were a, you know, a 100-unit apartment building, then I'd be like, okay, that's a significant, in my mind, exposure of life. If it was one person, probably not, but now 14 is a hard number. And I guess it almost seems like we either have to use the criteria they gave us or it's a subjective call as to whether it's significant or not.
You're right, I don't, I don't think you can determine whether or not they're gonna make 50% or more in improvements. You don't have that
Right.
in front of you right now.
Does it, are we allowed to do anything pending an evaluation? Or is it?
You're generally not supposed to condition your approval based on the actions of another officer
Correct.
or bard, or board, so I would caution you away from doing that.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure that they could submit anything new.
True. Okay, well then we'll just have to base it on our
Yeah.
opinion.
And they will, they will have to go to the building department again.
Yep.
Who the, who's the town's FEMA rep, so.
Mr. Carroll? Okay. That's an opinion, obviously, but yeah.
And if they do hit that threshold, they're gonna have to make other improvements, flood mitigation improvements to the property. But they'll go through the building department for that.
Okay.
For those requirements.
Additionally, let's say the project is approved, having MS4 requirement.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
We, I don't know it. I know FEMA said, I think they, I think they mentioned it was at five feet, where the base elevation flood bubble for that zone is 12. So looking at a difference of about seven feet. Yeah, it's, yep, it's approximately seven.
Okay, can, further comments? Questions on the application? Okay. Let me just go through, through our criteria. I believe we want to make sure that all of the, all of the, and maybe I should have asked for a modification of the, of the motion. I believe all of the recommendations that were presented in Mr. Brennan's letter should be incorporated. Who made the motion, who seconded? Okay, Mr. Carroll and Ms. Cleary, would you mind if we amend it to incorporate all of the recommendations made by Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Okay, both the mover and the seconder concur. As far as the circumstances, and actually it was, I think it became evident when we had the discussion about this sort of unique characteristics of this property where it's, it's essentially an island, if you consider the un- uncreated or the paper street portion of Orange, Orange Street. That is a very unusual condition, and it is not anything of their making, so that it was not a self-created hardship. This does appear that it would be the minimum necessary. It is, it is an expansion of the building, it makes it more uniform. It's an area, commercial area, MA zone. And building is non-conforming, so the current setback requirements, the, does make that all, the multiple frontages are all grounds for approval, so I would concur with that. Anybody else have any comments?
Also, it'll be a great improvement for the neighborhood.
Yes. That's good. Go ahead, Ms. Swiele.
These and the BEEP, I mean, it's about silk fence and sedimentation and erosion control plan. I didn't hear anything about that tonight. I mean, if it does, it turns out that it is subject to FEMA.
Mm-hmm.
Aren't those things gonna be important? Sediment controls, long-term stormwater improvements?
Is that part of the variance or does that go into the coastal plan?
So that can be a condition for either of them.
Okay.
We typically, I typically look at that as a term of determination process as well.
Mm-hmm.
Whether or not the application is coming to this board or just straight up building. That can be a condition.
Use your microphone, please, sorry.
We require the silk fence to be out there, or sediment controls to be placed. So it's a pretty standard position.
So all of these things that are in this DEEP at the end of it? You know, the
Let's go take a look.
control plan, I didn't hear anything about those.
Yeah. The stormwater improvements would be the MS4, which we already have.
Okay.
Erosion, sediment and erosion control.
I don't, I don't know what it is, but I've heard a number of times.
Okay.
Well, I guess, but.
Members? So Mr. Brennan has suggested that we add in that as an additional condition. Soil, sediment and erosion control plan to be, how do you want to state that?
It can be either a variance or coastal sediment.
Okay. Mm-hmm.
What about the stormwater improvements? Not that I really even know what that is. It does.
Let me check. Here, you want to use this one?
Did, did everybody here? That, that would be part of the MS4 requirements, a stormwater runoff, which is already a recommended condition. I do think it's a good idea to include the soil and sediment control as well as another condition.
Okay, just want to make sure we understand it, so sediment and erosion, so we're saying that a plan should be prepared for your office? Or I just want to make sure I understand how to make that requirement, how to state that requirement.
Yeah, they can add those into the existing survey.
Okay. Do you want to make that as a, as a motion to include that? Yeah?
Yes, yes.
Okay, motion by, by Ms.
What you said.
Ms. Swiele, that we include the sediment and erosion control as part one of the requirements to the, to the approval of the variance, and I'll second that, okay? I'll try your minds, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no? Carries five, zero, okay, so that's added as an additional condition. Very good. Okay, further discussion on the application? If not, we'll go for a vote. Ms. Cleary?
Yes.
Ms. Swiele?
Approved.
Mr. Carroll?
Approved.
Ms. Lynch? And the chair votes yes, so it's five in favor, zero in opposition. The motion is approved. Obviously, there's some footwork that has to be done, we'll talk about the coastal site plan later, and the building department will have some input on the rest of that items. And if there's anything that has, regarding this that has to come back to this board, please do let us know, because we're sort of, this one's a little, was a little complicated, just want to make sure we get it right. Okay, thank you. Okay, petition number three. Who hasn't gone yet? We'll take a motion to, take off the table, anyone? Mr. Carroll, second Ms. Swiele, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, carries unanimously. Discussion? Or motions?
I make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by, by Ms. Cleary?
Motion for a second.
By Ms. Lynch. Okay, discussion.
Blackbird mess.
It's gonna, I can't.
Yep, blackbird.
Right.
Can't wait for it to open.
Yeah, I mean.
As stated, as stated by Mr. Knott, who presented what is required of from the past to now, even though we haven't received it yet, of the parking space that is much feasible, like much better, only one parking space to 100, instead of the old way, it was less. It was one space 75 square feet. Now, it is in talk, as Mr. Dan Brennan has stated that he was not in the meeting due to shortage of staff, that this new law or new way of zoning for the parking space will be regulated. The old law was in the 1950s and 60s, due to the one space 75 square feet. It is 38 parking space. We also discussed the signage as well. It's only over by 10, it's currently at 24 feet, so it's over by 10 signage. I think it's very good. It will have enough parking. What he's doing with the shed is going to be good. We're just going to have parking space more available. You know, not going back, the zoning is going to approve one parking space to 100 square feet instead.
Further comments, discussion? Anyone? Go ahead.
For discussion, I think Mr. Knott made a good point with the. Mr. Knott made a good point that the, as far as the signage goes, it's not very visible from Holly Lane. I don't think it's a stretch for, really, for what they're, what they're asking. I believe that, it's within reason for where we are.
Yeah, I think it's very smart, because I drove right past it today. You didn't even see that sign, you were already past it.
Go ahead. Okay, the, for my own comments, the, as far as the signage is concerned, definitely understand that, that one. And I'm gonna tie it back to the unique characteristics of the lot. Because of the wetlands in there, you're, you're really boxed into a very small piece of real estate. And then that, as was stated in the record, pushed the footprint of the building further down, so it's very close to the street. And it would not, that's not typically the configuration I would imagine you would employ for a restaurant. It would be further back, so then you would have signage in the front. It's on a blind corner, when you come around that side. I understand, I definitely understand the need for that, so no objection to that. And because that drove the location of the building, that gets you out, that helps you with the, it's not a self-imposed hardship, because that was the requirement. In order to accommodate that, you had to build in that location, which forced you to have your signage in a less than optimal position. So that, that I can definitely understand. It seems like it's a relatively small amount of variance to alleviate the hardship. It's in a commercial area, there's lots of signage in the area, all very tastefully done, I would add. Nothing ostentatious, and that's been a very good partner for the town. The Big Y Plaza and everything there has been done, been very well. And this is now the furthest northern touch of this commercial corridor which, which has existed, so that, that's good. So for all those reasons, I would support the, the signage variance. The parking one is a little bit of a leap, but again, the, there's no other place to go, quite honestly. And I know it's going through the mathematics of this, how we got to this. If we're going from 39 now to 38, I want to make sure I get that straight. 38 parking spaces? Because there was a little bit of contention on that. It's still not optimal, just because of the fact that there are no other options to park on the property. And I think that's going to, sometimes I think some of these things tend to be a little bit in the self-policing, that it might limit, you might become very limited in that site if parking becomes a problem. But it is what it is, and I think at some point the applicant might decide to reconfigure if they have that much demand in there. But I'm willing to say let them make it work. I, I can't really say this is gonna conform to a law that hasn't been, regulation that hasn't been passed, I can't really go with that. However, as a public policy, it's obviously, you can say that the town is actually considering the validity of the, the parking spaces, and does that actually meet the correct needs of ours? So at least we know what's being under, it's not conforming with the existing, what's on the books right now, but as a policy position, the town is actively trying to understand and adapt to what it is. So, you know, the expanding, the outdoor area is significantly large. The other thing that I think is probably worth keeping in the back of your mind is that obviously outdoor dining takes a significant piece of the year, but not the entire year. So obviously, unless you have some fairly hearty souls, there're not gonna be people eating there in January and February and March and any other rainy nasty days. It's a unique piece of land, again, everything, I do recall the building that was there, the house that was there, and it was unique in that it had all of that wooden and wetland behind it. And, you know, obviously, the, I do feel for the owner that, and the applicant, that it's been a long winding road, and they're this close to getting things done, so I'll support this application. Any other comments, Mr. Carroll?
I think it might be important to note, too, that in reality, I think Mr. Fitzpatrick would only be harming himself and more so than the town if he can't fill his restaurant, because there's not enough parking.
As I said, it tends to be As I said, it tends to be self-policing, you know? Yeah, I think it's gonna be his interest to make sure that that parking situation works. So, and I certainly hope it does, because I really want to see that place succeed. Okay?
And also, the Marriott Hotel, when guest comes out of town, they would like to have somewhere to go eat.
And, you know, not for nothing, I know we can't make it a condition of approval, but I would probably encourage dialogue between the businesses, between the Marriott and the, and the restaurant, to make sure that there, maybe that there could be some traffic control in place. I've traveled for business sometimes, and I've stayed at a few hotels that have their idea of, you know, food is a vending machine and down, down the hallway. And it's like, okay, I might not have a car with, with me sometimes, you know? And it's like, okay, what can I do? Door dish only gets you so far. I'd rather go in place. And if I'm trying to conduct business, sometimes that's the best place to do it, is, is at a restaurant. So I know the complexity of that road. There's another unique characteristic of it, is that it's on the border between two towns. There's no existing condition there for safe crossing of the street. So, you know, it's not, nothing we can do, but I would probably encourage that dialogue between the Marriott and, and the restaurant. And if there's anything that we as town officials could do, I'm sure we'd be happy to help facilitate those discussions. Now, we'll go to a vote. Ms. Cleary?
Approve.
Ms. Lynch, Ms. Sweeley?
Approve.
Mr. Carroll? Ms. Lynch?
Approve.
And the chair votes yes. The ayes are five, the nays are zero, and it is approved. Thank you.
Now, Mr. Fitzpatrick, how did you, how did you come up with that name, Blackbird's Nest? Okay. There's a microphone there.
We're still in session. We'll take, we'll take a short recess. How's that? Two minutes, okay?
I'm just telling them.
He's just, he's just telling the story about how he, how the name came up. It's not an interruption.
So a blackbird flew into the building we're building in. And so, well, don't worry about it, because there's no windows or doors, and it's a little fly out. Well, it didn't fly out. It kept coming back, coming back. He determined it was a blackbird, and it built a nest. And then all of a sudden, there was a family of birds flying around inside, watching us build the, build the restaurant. And so we said, okay, fine. And one day, we're gone. Couple of weeks later, the bird came back. Another family left, flying around, right, left, came back again. Three families that, that the mother raised in there. And one day, they just left, and I, I went up to the rafters, and the nest was there. So I took the nest, and I said, well, that's the name of the place, Blackbird's Nest. And we're gonna make it a family restaurant, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna make it nice. And it's gonna be a bird thing. It's gonna be really cool inside. And, you know, we hope, you know, everybody will, will get it.
Can you put the food and water out for these birds right away?
Yeah.
Wow, yeah.
It's funny you say that. When Kenny Rogers was doing the cricket, the hot dog, the first hot dog. He said, can I go to sign there? I said, sure. The night here is gonna be a cricket to go up there. And so that was pretty wild.
Yeah. Well, that's a charming story. You should get that on a plaque and hang it inside.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be, actually be in a, in the child's menu, children's menu. And we didn't have grain, so they have a little menu. They're gonna be able to draw all their.
Oh, that sounds.
We are, we are gonna do a story inside. So it is, it's, to make it unique, you know?
I can't wait till it opens.
We like the name, and hopefully, it's, you know, what we hope.
Okay, we'll reconvene at eight thirty-seven after that brief recess? We're, we're in legislative session, you know, officially, you know, yeah, no problem. Okay, moving on to the CAM site review, one twenty-five Mazarick Avenue. Mr. Brennan, could you just walk us through what we should be considering, so that we do this by the book? I think so. There we go. The main items you should consider while approving a coastal site plan are the comments from DEEP. In this case, we don't have anything from Waterfront. And the reason being on that is the applicants were unaware they were supposed to show for their application. Really, DEEP's comments are the most important going forward. And, you know, if you think the application is not in harmony with their comments, then it's something you disapprove. But typically, once the variance application is approved, the coastal site plan application is approved too. And in this case, we're, what we're looking at is coastal site plan review for the expansion of an existing nonconformity in the MA zone in order to construct in addition to an existing industrial building. I think we've had, on most of the topics, really, Chris, Commissioner, you should do a roll call vote for it. Okay, in the interest of moving that along, I'll move adoption of the CAM site review for one twenty-five Mazarick Avenue. Can I have a second? Mr. Carroll? Okay. Again, making reference to the lengthy discussion we had on the, the actual variance itself. You know, I, I will obviously make sure that, we'll ask, as they go through the building process, to make sure that they conform to any regulations as necessary. As, we can't speak so much to property. It's good to know that this is a commercial building as opposed to if there was a significant number of residences. I'd be a little bit more concerned about the potential risks to, to life and property. Not have, you know, it's a, it's not even two full stories, as we said. It's a, you know, a partial, it's a first floor and then a mezzanine area, so that it's not actually the full size of there. So it seems like, like this is not an excessively large, but we want to make sure that they conform to all of the coastal regulations. So I think we'll take it as a, unless anybody has any other comments, I think we'll take it as is that we approve the coastal site plan. Any comments? Okay, Ms. Cleary, we'll take a vote. Okay, Ms. Sweeley?
To approve, yes.
Mr. Carroll? Mr. Lynch? And chair votes yes. Carries five zero. Okay, sediment and erosion control, anything? No. Approval of the minutes that were previously sent from September the third, twenty twenty-four? You were there. I saw that look. Yeah, you were there. You sat in it. Okay, have a motion to approve the minutes? And Ms. Sweeley, second Mr. Carroll. Any corrections, changes, modifications? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Any oppose? No. So that carries five zero. Any members' concerns or comments? Any other items? I would just thank those members that participated in the review of the zoning regulations. I know I saw, I saw a few of you came down there for that. And if you have any comments for the zoning commission as they go through the revision, please let them know. But thank you for your participation, those of you that came. Please be aware that our next meeting is on Wednesday, November sixth. Tuesday, the fifth, is election day. And I know the town hall is, they use the council chambers for the, I think it's, same-day voting or same-day registration. So this building, this room would be utilized, and everybody's attention's gonna be elsewhere, I can assure you. So, you know, we will meet, we had made the original plan to move that meeting to Wednesday, the sixth, here in council chambers. And you'll get all your materials as well. Same, same procedure, just a slightly different day. Anything else before the commission? Hearing none. We'll take a motion to adjourn. Ms. Lynch, second Mr. Carroll. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. Carries unanimously. We're out at eight forty-two. I think that's gotta be our longest meeting ever. So have a good evening, everybody, and we'll see you in November.